Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay. I'd like to call the March 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to Order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Is it?
Chairman Walsh.
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Laflamme and Mr. Scributennis are absent this evening.
Yep, and excused, thank you. Okay, we have a couple sets of minutes to work on tonight. First set of minutes being the February 22nd, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A move by Mr. McPartlin, and it looks like seconded by Mr. Khan.
I'll second it, thank you.
And we have any comments or corrections or changes to the February 22nd meeting minutes? I have a couple of minor typos. Hate to do that, but let's get them the best we can. All right. First one is, let's see, looking at my notes here. First one is page one, line 26. It just says in the middle sentence there, Chairman Walsh stated he had one correct. That's one correction. Hopefully, I get more than one correct in my lifetime, but there's one correction there, okay, on line 26. And then on page two, line 67. Let's see, I'm trying to find it. Oh. Yeah, line 67, right at the end of the sentence, it says, "I will state," it should be, "it will state all new builds will be evaluated." So the "I" should be in "it." And then on page three, the line 82. It says, "recommend safety concerns." That should be, "address safety concerns." And that's in regards to the propane tanks, so. And that's all I had. Does anybody else have any other corrections or changes to the minutes? All right, all those in favor of mending the minutes for those minor changes, or they just stated signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Is anybody opposed to the changes? Okay, so we have a change minutes, and all those in favor of approving the minutes as modified signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, we'll approve the February 22nd, 2021 meeting minutes as modified. We'll move on to the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes, so I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Khan. Any corrections or changes to those minutes? I have none.
Mr. Chairman, just a minor. Proposed spelling correction. Line 89 on page three makes reference to McGovern Avenue. Should be McGovern Drive.
Okay. Line number, what line number was that again, Patrick?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Okay. Any other changes or corrections? I think that's straightforward enough, we just do a friendly amendment on that one. All those in favor of approving the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes? Signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, we'll approve the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes with that minor modification. Thank you, everybody. Move on the agenda. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to Privilege of the Floor. And we'll have anybody wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters, which will have, yep, state their name and address for the record. Laura, do you have anybody queued up for discussion tonight?
Yeah, I have four people that I know of. Adam, do you want to go first? I'm just doing them in order of request.
Why don't you have Becky go before me?
Okay, so Rebecca Holmes.
Gee, thanks, Adam.
You're welcome.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, Planning Board. Rebecca Holmes, 1379 Van Antwerp Road. So, the court was successfully convinced that your decision to disallow the subdivision at 1380 Van Antwerp was arbitrary and capricious. The word arbitrary means random, like flipping a coin. The fact that this board held five meetings in 2019, considered overwhelming input from the Tree Council, the Conservation Advisory Council, the Town Planner, the Town Attorney, the Town Historian, and listened to countless community members, some of whom are Harvard-educated PhDs, historians, teachers, lawyers, engineers, two former residents of the property, and numerous others, and read dozens of letters from the community, this would not suggest randomness. Your decision was not arbitrary, and you know it. You knew it would not sit well with a determined developer, and you knew he would probably fight it. And now, you have to decide if you're going to say, whoops, we had a bad day and made a crazy wrong decision, or are you going to take a stand and defend what you know was a well-thought-out decision? So hopefully, I have convinced you that your decision was not arbitrary. Now, let's talk about capricious, which means changeable for no reason. Capricious in that the first subdivision was approved and the second subdivision was not, for no reason. As I see it, comparing the two subdivisions is, as they say, apples to oranges. The first subdivision included land that wasn't even part of 1380 Van Antwerp. It was not, as the judge states on page four, a 3.27 acre lot. It was actually two lots. One, two and a half acres, and another totally separate 0.77 acre lot. Also, on page four, the judge states that the first subdivision was granted without restriction as to the removal of mature trees. This, too, is inaccurate, since the plot plan clearly labeled a no-cut buffer zone along the southern edge and another no-cut buffer zone around the wetland. These were deeded, mapped, filed buffers that totaled roughly 20,000 square feet in size. Furthermore, the notes on the subdivision map filed at the county clerk's office required that the grading plan submitted for building permits shall identify all trees with a diameter of five inches or more and indicate those that are proposed to be removed and the reason why such removal is necessary. And as we know, the main lot wasn't going to be touched, and all the trophy trees there would remain. And the Planning Board didn't have to ask for any of this, because we offered it right up front with a subdivision application. On page nine, the judge states that, quote, "the main property trees, landscape are all in the same condition currently as at the time of the board's earlier approval." This comment is generally accurate, but it is another demonstration why these two subdivisions are different. The first one preserved the main property, as was stated, and the second one will obliterate it. Apples to oranges. Plenty of reasons to approve the first and deny the second. Not capricious. That said, the judge felt that the historic significance of the property was not a good enough reason to deny the second subdivision, because of a lack of a formal designation or label on the property as indeed historic. So, does this mean, for example, that private property isn't really private unless it's labeled with private property signs every 10 feet around the perimeter? And is my neighbor's flower garden not really a flower garden because it isn't neatly fenced off like they do in Manhattan, but labeled with a little sign that says, "flower garden, keep off"? Is it okay for me to walk my dog across it and trample it? Seriously, folks, does the lack of a plaque by the front door mean it's not historic? And that it doesn't deserve protection? Even if the property had been on the historic register and had a plaque by the front door, there are no inherent protections. The National Register website states, quote, "There are no restrictions placed on private owners of registered properties. Private property owners may sell, alter, or dispose of their property as they wish," end quote. Further, the judge's statement on page 10 that the board expressed regret at not placing a restriction on further development of the main property during the first subdivision. Well, folks, as they say, hindsight is 20/20, and let's not be Monday evening quarterbacks. But even if the board had thought to formally restrict this property in some way, it's possible, and I have read cases about this online whereby a deed restriction can be undone. Similar to what's happening here, a landowner can hire the right attorneys and go to court and argue that there has been sufficient development in the neighborhood as to make the restriction unenforceable. And guess what? The judge can order that the deed restriction be removed. So, I'm not sure if anything could have been done to permanently prevent this type of project from being proposed. The only way to stop it from actually happening is for you to say no a second time, and set a precedent that this board knows its business and means business. Page 18 states that the board was unduly influenced by public opposition, and this isn't a good enough reason either to deny the subdivision. But, folks, isn't that why we have Privilege of the Floor and public hearings? If the opinions and expertise of the members of this community are unimportant or meaningless, then perhaps these forums should be discontinued. The first subdivision, by the way, had no public opposition. Nothing. Nobody. Apples to oranges, again. Page 17 states that the Leesys have agreed to all recommendations regarding tree preservation. Well, it's one thing to agree and another to carry out. It will be impossible to maintain these trees, per the Tree Council's suggestion of snow fencing to the drip lines. The construction of the houses, the rain gardens, the utility trenching, the regrading, very dangerous to those trees. And at the last meeting, it was stated that the chestnut tree, rather, a black walnut tree, behind the house had to come down in order to rebuild a garage. Seriously, folks, that tree has a three-foot diameter trunk and a 75-foot canopy, and was in perfect health, last I knew. Apples to oranges. Which brings me to my last point. One change that would help preserve whatever trees are left would be to relocate the water line connections for the new houses to the front yards, which would protect the backyard trophy trees from damage during trenching or drilling. The trees in the front yards have mostly been removed already, and it will be easier for future maintenance having the lines more accessible in the front yards. The other related point is that the water mains in this immediate area are all under private property, not in the public right-of-way. And this was indeed the most challenging part of the first subdivision for me. It is not typical. But if the water mains are under private property, as they are at this location, you need not only permission of the town to connect, but also permission from the private property owner in the form of an easement. In this case, the applicants would need permission from the town and an easement from the private property owner, and also permission from Schenectady County if they are crossing Van Antwerp Road. Now, I can't speak for my neighbors, but I personally do not intend to grant the easement for this proposed water connection under my private property. If this applicant is unable to obtain a required easement for encroachment onto private property, then he will have to find another way to bring in water. This might include a water main extension about 600 feet on Hilltop Road in the public right-of-way, which would be pretty pricey. During the first subdivision, I faced these same issues. I tried and was ultimately unable to obtain private easements for water connections. So, if you remember correctly, we were forced to extend the water main in the right-of-way on McGovern Drive to bring water to the property. And this plan was fully vetted and approved by the engineering department before it was ever brought before the Planning Board for sketch plan approval. An adequate plan for water supply is indeed required by Section 189-6-B-1 of Niskiuna Code. And as such, this proposal is not ready for sketch plan approval tonight. And this is yet another reason why the first subdivision was approvable, and this one is not. The first subdivision had the water plan fully figured out and vetted with engineering prior to sketch plan application. And this second subdivision does not have a plan that is going to work. Once again, apples to oranges, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Holmes.
So the second person I had was Adam Ruder. Excellent. Oh, there you are, okay.
Yep, thanks. Thank you, thank you, Laura. Hi, I'm Adam Ruder, 2505 McGovern Drive. First of all, I want to second everything that Ms. Holmes said. I thought she spoke very eloquently. I understand that, you know, the board may feel that its hands are tied based on the previous lawsuit and court decision. That said, I want to register the neighborhood's dissatisfaction with the outcome if this were to be approved and make some recommendations for the future. First, I really need to emphasize that Mr. Leesey's track record in our neighborhood alone is a warning sign. As Becky mentioned, his previous record of clearing trees on the three lots behind 1380 Van Antwerp, which, at which he cleared far more trees than were indicated on the approved site plan, sketch plan, and again, on his current building lots on Antonia Drive, for which he was reprimanded by the town for removing trees before his developments approved, indicate that he should not be trusted to obey the directions of the Planning Board. And further oversight is desperately needed if the board finds that people are serial offenders of changing their plans once they have approval or going ahead before they even have approval. They should be able to consider that in their approvals, or at least in how they enforce the work that's done with their blessing. This is a really important point, because as it seems to be now, this is really not something that is necessarily taken into consideration, and it just encourages bad actors to continue. I find this really disturbing as well, because Mr. Leesey is building a house for himself and his family in our neighborhood, and it certainly does not seem like a way to ingratiate himself to his future neighbors to continue with these types of offenses. You know, if, 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 I would think that someone who is going to move into the neighborhood would be really thinking of himself as a, trying to be a good steward and a good neighbor, and I just think that this is really galling to see this type of behavior. So, I know that Mr. Leesey has said the right things and that is going to be preserving the trees that the Tree Council recommended on this, at 1380 Van Antwerp, but as Becky said, you know, it's a lot easier said than done, and I think that that alone warrants some extra scrutiny for this application. And I would just really strongly recommend that the Planning Board think through how it can incorporate its lessons learned and its past experiences into future decisions. Whether or not that can happen with this one, I know that the Planning Board has to follow certain rules that have been approved and set forth. You know, it is what it is, but so that, so that things like this cannot happen again, I would really strongly encourage the Planning Board to increase its ability to take that type of thing into consideration and to provide oversight once the, once the sketch plans are approved and as construction is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruder. Do you have anybody else, Laura, or any letters to read?
Yes, I have a letter to read, and then Gail King was going to try and get on. I don't see her yet, but if she's not on, when I finish that letter, I'll read her letter as well. Oops, sorry. Okay, so. This letter is titled, "Resolution 2021-11 Sketch Plan Approval for 1380 Van Antwerp Subdivision to the Board. I want to take a moment to thank the board for its courage, commitment, and strength on this issue. It is greatly appreciated by the resident directly impacted by this project. Regarding the current application, I respectfully ask the board to reject the application once again, as it is still an assault on our community's history, environment, and integrity." Sorry, can you hold one second? There we go. Rejecting the second phase of the major subdivision is important to the hundreds of homeowners and legions of dutiful voters of Woodcrest and Rosendale neighborhoods. The site is unique and important gateway. Aesthetically, it serves as a pleasing and home-value-adding transition between the town center, Knott Street Van Antwerp Apartments, and the post-modern Woodcrest neighborhood. Historically, the site tells a community story that cannot be told anywhere else, elsewhere. Practically, the site serves as a visual and sonic buffer between Van Antwerp Road, aka the GE Speedway, and the residents of Woodcrest. Deforesting the land and curving two more homes onto the site will permanently eliminate the gateway, and thus, these value-added, adding properties. Unfortunately, this is not a case of simply adding two more homes to Woodcrest. It is a case of allowing one developer to circumvent the community's fair and reasonable planning process. This application, when taken with the adjacent development, is part of a larger assault on the community by the developer. These houses are in addition to the first three houses packed into the site behind the historic farmhouse. Since building all five houses at once would have been declared a major subdivision, the buildings, the builds have been strategically segregated by the developer into two minor subdivisions. This action by the developer, Lou Leesey, achieves the result of one major subdivision while avoiding the community standards, rules, regulations of a major subdivision. While this circumvention of the major subdivision required minces cunning, it is simply wrong and should not be rewarded. To be clear, rejecting the applicant, application, hulks, earnest developers, and hurts behind-the-scenes speculators. A vote supporting this application rewards speculators and significantly hurts earnest developers who follow the spirit and letter of Niskiuna's community law, rules, regulations, and standards. Within the last three years, the same developer, Lou Leesey, the Leesey Group, has engaged in activity that was literally in violation of Niskiuna's regulations and blatantly inconsistent with town practices. Leesey's reckless clearcutting behind the family homes on Antonia wanted Niskiuna's community standards and regulations, earning him notice in the Schenectady Gazette in 2018, where clearing and grading has been done beyond the scope of what was approved under the single-family building permit for 2495 Antonia Drive. A vote denying this plan is a vote for the many developers who have integrity and work within the scope and the spirit of Niskiuna planning. A vote approving this plan tells the speculator community that violating the town's regulation and simply ignoring its governance carries no meaningful consequences. It not only sends a clear message to speculators, but more clearly to exploiters who want to cash in on Niskiuna's hard-won reputation without needing to play by its rules. Approving this plan signals cynical and aggressive speculators to exploit the system for their own gain and at the expense of the community and its planners. We know you work hard on maintaining these standards, and these standards are core to ensuring that Niski remains a great place to live and work, i.e. a desirable and valuable real estate market. Ultimately, a vote to approve this plan clearly declares that two unnecessary and inanimate houses are exponentially more valuable to Town Hall than the agreed-upon standards of thousands of people in the community. I greatly appreciate your time and attention to our concerns. Again, thank you for your hard work and commitment to our community. Sincerely, Chuck Petrowski, 1336 Stanley Lane, Niskiuna, New York, March 22nd, 2021. Is Gail on the call? Okay, I'll go ahead and read her email. Wait, sorry, just give me one second. This text is extremely small, so I'm just going to make it bigger so I can read it more easily. Okay. And her letter states, I would like to read the, oh, sorry, okay. Gail King, Niskiuna resident, Niskiuna business owner, Niskiuna property owner. Niskiuna. Niskiuna, neighborhoods always pedestrian-friendly, where children walk to school and safely rode their bikes around the neighborhoods. Markers and bikers always have had the right-of-way. What is happening behind closed doors? Without full disclosure, zoning has been changed in favor of bars and full-service restaurants in family neighborhoods. Crescent Road, one block long, was a lane going east to the farm. Now, with the stroke of a pen, the strike of a key on a laptop, it becomes a boulevard. Now, we hear we need pedestrian-friendly, walkable roads. What does that mean? Sidewalks for all the town streets, parking for all the stores, paid for by town residents, or extra parking on town streets just for the bar/restaurant paid for by the town? The same bar/restaurant that our planners have made a special rule for. This very small bar/restaurant will be allowed no more than 50 people at one time on the premises. Does that make crowding legal? The rule includes seven shared parking spaces. Board recommending that Mr. Nicky keep his customers in these seven spaces. The parking space in this plaza, the parking spaces in this plaza are maintained by building owners for their tenants, not for bar/restaurant at all hours. If our town is taking this parking over, let us know. We also hear plans are emerging for 500 feet of Knott Street to be reduced parking and limit access to historic shopping buildings. I'm hearing the 15 parking spaces on the south that are being replaced by a fourth lane are not really there. Sorry, it's, it's 80-plus feet by 500 feet of blacktop divided by two lanes, one parking lane and one access lane, one way in and out. Really, we, still, we hear parking will be the same, and planners say this with a straight face. Not supposed to mention all the Knott Street improvements. A alternate plan should be investigated. Moving the through-traffic south, trade the land on the south for the land on the north in front of the building, the business buildings. They need enough parking to survive. These historic buildings deserve respect. Seems like all these, or most of these improvements could be done for the $1,500,000 allotted, the 500 feet of improvements now planned by Schenectady County, Niskiuna. Knott Street, Cliffson Park Road, Crescent Road. Will one continuous plan for this original town center be made? Will business owners and property owners be heard before or after plans are final? Sincerely, Gail King, Niskiuna restaurant, Niskiuna resident, Niskiuna business owner, Niskiuna property owner. And that is all I have, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Laura, for reading that, and thank you to Mr. Petrowski and Ms. King for submitting comments for Privilege of the Floor via email. Is there anybody else online that wishes to be heard regarding Privilege of the Floor? Okay, hearing, hearing no one else, and having no other emails, I'll close Privilege of the Floor, and we'll move on. We have no unfinished tonight, unfinished business tonight. We have one item under new business, and that is Resolution 2021-11. Resolution for sketch plan approval for 1380 Van Antwerp Road, and that's the Leesey three-lot subdivision. That resolution has been posted on the town website, but as always, I'll summarize the resolution. Resolve that this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this sketch plan as a minor subdivision, as defined by Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna, and be it further resolved at the Planning Board and Zoning Commission, does hereby grant sketch plan approval for the concept subdivision drawing entitled, "Subdivision Plan Lands Now Formerly of Leesey, 1380 Van Antwerp Road, Town of Niskiuna, County of Schenectady, State of New York, by ABD Engineers LLP, dated September 24th, 2018, and last modified Rev. 4, March 19th, 2021." March 19th, 2021, with the following conditions. One, Sketch Plan Approval is a conceptual review of the proposed lot division for the purposes, purposes of classification and preliminary discussion as described in the Town of Niskuna zoning sections 189-6 and 189-22. The location of proposed boundary lines, infrastructure, utilities, and improvements are subject to change during the environmental review, engineering, public hearing, and subdivision review process. Mr. McPartlin, do I have a motion on the resolution?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Okay, uh, motion for adoption, uh, by Mr. McPartlin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold. And, uh, discussion. Obviously, we heard from the public, uh, tonight, concerns. You know, uh, you know, I think we need to move forward based on the judge's decision. Um, again, we'll do our, our best with engineering. Uh, this is sketch plan, things are subject to change, and that's why we made sure that condition, which is part of our zoning code, was included just for awareness for the public and for the applicant. So, you know, we'll do our best, uh, if this resolution passes, to try to preserve uh, as much integrity of the site as physically possible. Any other comments regarding the resolution?
Yes, I will note, it's never whether we like an application or not, whether the neighbors like it or not, it's really whether it meets the requirements. And I believe this one does.
Anything else under discussion? Uh, just for the public's information, we will continue with, uh, talking about this project in a few more moments after this resolution on the agenda for tonight. Okay, no one else? Okay, hearing no one else, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll? Mr. Khan?
Nay.
Mr. McPartlin?
Um, I'll vote aye, and I just wanna add that, um, my, um, my support for this resolution, um, is in part, um, motivated by the representations made by Mr. Lisi at our last meeting, uh, that he would, um, work with the tree council and the architectural review board to preserve as much of the, historical and aesthetic values of this property in his development of this.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh? Aye. Motion carries the resolution for sketch plan approval, uh, passes, and it's approved. Um, and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll do our best to, to work on this project, uh, to try to meet the needs as much as possible of the community. Um, and thank you, everyone. Okay, that's it for new business tonight. Uh, so we'll move right to discussion items. And first up, of course, under discussion items is 1380 Van Antwerp Road, and that's the Lisi three-lot subdivision. Um, I don't know, Mr. McPartlin, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss tonight? Maybe just kicking this off, of course.
Um, well, um, it's clear in the revised plan that, um, we're looking at a new garage now, um, so definitely that referral to the architectural review board will be, um, a condition of any final flat approval, as we've discussed already. Um, and then in the process of, um, you know, the lot clearing, we'll really be looking to stick to the tree clearing plan, uh, as ours was outlined before. And, um, you know, a lot, a lot, um, hinges on the, in my opinion, the, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, so I'm eager to, to see, um, the engineering comments we receive, um, on that plan.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. McPartlin. Um, I know that, uh, the last, last meeting, you know, was suggested, uh, relocating the entrance, uh, off of McGovern's and the, um, you know, the gar- garage relocated to that, uh, site or rebuilt at that site with a new garage. Uh, took the garage by, uh, today, um, you know, uh, you know, as part of the review process, we have to make sure it works there, of course, right, from a, uh, a water management standpoint, you know, tree and property management standpoint also. Uh, you know, it seemed like it was awful close, and I know Mr. Lisi's online, the new proposed garage to the side yard. Um, did, Mr. Lisi, did you get enough detail to determine whether you're gonna need any variances for that, or will it be okay as proposed?
Yeah, it's okay as proposed.
Is it? Okay. Yeah, you mean, I, yes. It just kinda looked different when driving by versus the, you know, the drawing that was submitted. It looked a little tight there. Um, and the trees, I know that, um, maybe Laura can help me out here, or Mr. McPartlin. I know we did walk the site with Mr. Lisi, it was probably, I don't even know if it was last year or the year before, now I'm starting to lose track there, but did the tree council actually get out to the, um, the site back, uh, when we were working on this project previously, Laura?
Yes, they did.
Okay, but we will need to, we'll need to, uh, re- redo that, or at least get another walkthrough based on the gar- proposed location of the garage now. Is that a true statement? That we'll get them out there again?
Yeah, we can have them look at it again, and they did, we did bring it up at the last tree council meeting, and I think I put in the agenda statement that their one comment was, you might be able to relocate the driveways to save some additional trees, like in, for instance, Lot 3. The driveway's kind of going between two, two trees. Um, and it, it might make sense, although I know that's probably because that's where the existing driveway is, but if that's gonna be upgraded and made bigger to have it flip-flop so that the, there aren't, so you're not taking any trees down to put in a bigger driveway there.
The trees are still marked. The trees, they're still marked, yeah.
Yeah, they're still marked, okay.
Yes.
Maybe just have the tree council, if they're still marked, at least take a look at the, the proposed location for the, the, the new garage, just make sure everything works there at that site, okay? At that location. Um, during privilege of the floor, we heard, um, some comments regarding easements, uh, or, um, water line in front yard, uh, potential owner approval and county approval. Um, Mr. Lisi, I know, I know that's part of the engineering, um, I don't know if you have any, is there anything to add at this time, or is that something that you'll be evaluating, looking on a go-forward basis?
Yeah, we've looked at the water lines that currently exist. We don't know any issues of us being able to tap into the water lines. So I don't know what Mrs. Holmes was talking about.
Okay, but that's something we'll, yeah, something that we'll handle during engineering, would be either by the town or, or with a town-designated engineer. Did, Laura, did we have a town-designated engineer before?
Laura, do we need county approval?
Um, yes, we do need county approval. We do not have a town-designated engineer, um, yet, but we can set one up. We often don't have them until after sketch plan approval. And like Lou, I think has talked to Matt Yedo a couple of times about this, and I don't really know where they landed. Um, I know Matt was interested in the town paying for a certain amount of the water line, you know, up to this property, and then the develop, putting the water line in in front of this property, um, to remove some of the issues with the water line being behind the homes in the area, add extra pressure, and I, you know, I don't really know where you guys landed, but I know it was discussed.
Yeah, there's a, there's a water pressure problem on the, on that street. It affects everybody on the road. And Matt wanted me to bring a, a larger line across my properties to the connection on Van Antwerp to increase the pressure for other streets on Hilltop, uh, the homes at Hilltop. So we had that discussion, but then we never followed up once we got tonight. So there's a water pressure issue, asks, that Matt's asking me to help the town with the water pressure on Hilltop. Which I was, it, I was, possibly would do that for the town.
Okay, well, it's something that we'll address as we commence the engineering review.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Lisi at this point in time? I know it's, it's, uh, you know, we just kick, basically, re, uh, jump-starting this.
Shore does exist in Hilltop, so there's an existing shore line that we tap into. But that does exist.
I guess one of my, um, concerns was along what you had talked about, Mr. Walsh, is the
No, you're on DUC, DUC.
Taking away more impermeable services, surfaces, rather, of McGovern. I mean, it's already a very, it's a tough drainage issue. Um, we've already heard from the neighbor previously on multiple occasions that when the other new home was put there, I know that the neighbor adjacent was having significant water issues, um, most of the stream in backyard, so I guess if it's already a bad issue, I'm concerned it's gonna get even worse. Um, just how we're gonna go ahead and take care of that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, as far as, uh, Seeker in the public hearing, Laura, what, what do we need to, to do to get to that point in the project?
Um, so the, so I, I mean, I can run it past the CAC, but the, you know, the plan hasn't substantially, um, changed. They didn't um, want to relook at it unless they had to, um, but you guys have to do a secret determination, um, prior to calling for a public hearing. So, um, your next step would be a resolution calling for a public hearing and making a secret determination. Um, some of the outstanding items, maybe pre, if, I, I mean, I don't know if you guys are ready to call for a public hearing, or just wanna work through a couple of outstanding items, like we could, um, have engineering, you know, open up the discussion on the water line and see what the town's budget is and where we're at on that, 'cause that would obviously, I think, help, um, bring the service lines to hillside apps, which helps with clearing. And also, we do have, I know initial, um, kind of a stormwater management plan, but we do need to work on the stormwater management, um, to make sure that that we're accounting for it the way that it needs to be accounted for, and then schedule a tree council walkthrough. Those are the m- main things, although I know Clerk and Patrick actually were working, did I cover everything there?
There's a permit that, SBDES permit that needs to be obtained at some point in the process as well.
Right, and Lou, maybe it's helpful to have Luigi at the next meeting.
You know, that permit is, Laura, this is, are you talking about this being called, considered segmentation?
Uh, yes, yep, we have an email in writing from the DEC that says it's considered a common plan of development, so you have
I don't dis, I don't agree with that, because I'm not the original developer. If, if it was Mrs. Holmes doing this, I would agree with you, but since I bought an approved subdivision that was approved, there can't be segmentation.
Yeah, so the ter, the determination didn't come from us, it came from DEC.
No, no, I understand that. And I, I, our conversation would see the, another fellow from CDC who says this is not segmentation, because I bought a, a subdivision that was approved. So I didn't, common plan.
We had originally put in writing, um, in the sketch plan, um, denial, actually, that we wanted, um, the developer to get something in writing from the DEC, but, you know, obviously, things kind of changed after the sketch, after the action on that. So the town reached out to DEC, and we have it in writing from DEC that we have to consider a common plan of development. Um, so I think that, you know, we have to go with that unless we get something from a higher authority, you know, than we have, that says that it's no longer a common plan of development.
Was that, was that from Jamie Malcolm?
That was from Jamie Malcolm, yeah.
Okay. I broke, spoke to Jamie Malcolm's supervisor that says it is not segmentation, so I will take care of that.
Okay. Do, do, Mr. Lisi, do you have a copy of that, um, determination?
No, I do not.
That's something, uh, Laura, that we can share?
Yeah, yep, that'd be great.
I, yeah, I can share the determination from Mr. Malcolm that it's a common plan of development. If Lou has a different determination, we'd have to see that.
Yep, absolutely.
Exactly, you got it, okay. So the, uh, so I guess the, the question on the floor is, uh, you know, the things Laura, you just mentioned, uh, you know, uh, where we land on water line, you know, a tree walkthrough, that's all part of the, the process. Um, typically, we have, um, sketch plan, and, uh, it's, you know, I believe it's close enough for to call for a public hearing and to do a secret determination. That resolution for the next meeting, I'll defer to the Board and to, uh, Mr. McPartlin. But I, I think those are things that we always work on, you know, um, during the process, and if something comes up, uh, in addition from the, um, public at the public hearing, obviously, we'll address that either in an engineering fashion or with whatever stakeholders, uh, are required to address any concerns that do come up. So, uh, I guess I'll ask Mr. McPartlin, um, are you comfortable, uh, uh, Mr. McPartlin, the rest of the board calling for, um, negative declaration on Seeker and a, uh, public hearing for our next meeting? Sounds like the Conservation Advisory Council does not wanna look at it again, and we've already had their, um, input.
Um, you know, I, 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 I share the concern raised by Ms. Shenfield with respect to water runoff at an increased rate, uh, in the direction of McGovern Drive. So, you know, in, in good conscience, I don't feel that we can make a negative declaration without having a SWIP or some TDE comment on the stormwater management practice.
Okay.
And I know we can engineer things, um, so, but I, I think we've heard a lot of public comment, right? So I, I think I'd rather have our ducks in a row as it relates to, um, the environmental factors here at play.
Yeah.
Before we entertain any future comment from the public.
Mr. Khan? But, yeah, and, and, and obviously, I mean, I, I obviously know the way I voted, but nonetheless, at this part of the process, I don't see a basis for, uh, declaring a negative declaration on the Seeker.
All right, so we'd like some preliminary information. I mean, usually, you know, we work through a sketch plan, any comments from the pub, with public. You know, again, as we said in the resolution, things can change as we, uh, develop the engineering. Um, so we need to kind of lock down, you know, the garage is okay, there's no major trees that have to be removed to support the new garage location, 'cause all that would factor into the, um, any stormwater, uh, management or speedy's permit, right? Any, any action there, you know, we need to have, uh, a good feel for what's gonna happen on the property. Uh, so I can go either way, um, uh, uh, but I, you know, are we gonna be able to get something, you know, within the next couple of weeks, uh, you know, to move this forward also, I guess? Uh, what's your timetable, Mr. Lisi?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you read the court's decision. It's very clear that I've gotta be treated the same as every other developer in this town. These lots are more than 18,000 square feet. They're bigger than the minimum lot requirement in the town in Niskuna. So you raise these same concerns for every development that exceeds 18,000. We talk about drainage. I'm not the, I'm not the first developer building houses within Niskuna. We built on Pierce Road, two houses on Pierce Road. On the corner lot, no, I wasn't scrutinized to this extent over two lots in Niskuna. I exceed, I meet the code, the court's decision's clear on that, that I've met the code in every fashion whatsoever. Not to, not to hold back a public hearing because of drainage issues, you've got a drainage issue with every lot in Niskuna. Right? So, so you're actually treating me differently than everybody else in the town in Niskuna. That was clear from the court's decision. And that's the basis of my, of why he made that decision. On top of it all, just so you folks set the record straight. When Mrs. Holmes sold me this property, she certified in the, in the, when she sold to me, her Realtor was, made it very clear to my Realtor that if you buy this house, you can subdivide the remaining parcel into three lots. So she could get more money. Now she got the money from me, now she wants to stop it because she lives across the street. So that is, that is, and I'll have my Realtor, who can testify to that, she asked for more, 'cause we can get more lots in those last lots, so I, I, I kind of laugh at her because she's got the money, now she wants to stop it. So I wanna be treated the same as everybody else.
Well, Mr. Lisi, just one comment is that we don't wanna treat you the same as everyone else, and we always do with every applicant, so uh, uh, we're just, we're trying to be cautious, and I think the Board's just trying to do a good job here because of the, the past concerns on the project. Our, our goal is to treat, you know, treat you the same as everyone.
I understand, and, and you, you know me, the past, whatever development, I've always been able to supply whatever you folks need in the future to make the project work. I've never tried to go, not go the extra mile to make this thing work.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and, and the issue, and, and there's several projects we've been involved in where, when we know there's an issue, especially with drainage, we just take it a little bit more carefully.
But where is the issue with drainage? I don't understand. I've built three houses, not one house has a drainage issue.
And I think that's, and, and I think that that's part of the issue, is that there is some uncertainty, it's exactly what is the problem that would be there with drainage, that, that I think we would need to, that we would need to understand more carefully.
Anybody can say it's a drainage issue. There is, we built three homes, there are no drainage issues. You, I talked to the residents that live there. So there is a stream that's always had water flowing, that's not even near our property. So I don't understand what the drainage issue. My daughter lives in the house currently, there's no drainage issues in her basement either.
Well, Lou, I, and this is, I'm just speaking from, like, we have some outstanding items, um, especially with how the drainage needs to be treated as far as a common plan of development or not. And I know that you did, and as far as I know, the last stormwater management plan that you had, that ABD had done, I believe it was incorporating all of the lots, all I believe it was incorporating all of the lots, all five of the lots.
In the rain gar, in the rain gardens, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like, I think that it's reasonable to update that, make sure that it's in compliance with whatever we have in writing from the DEC, and bring that back so that the board can have a clear understanding of how and, how we're addressing the environmental impacts so that they can do that secret determination, and I think that is um, a reasonable way of, 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 of us reviewing these subdivisions. Um, that's my recommendation. It's not too hard to get those things um, approved and ready for the board to review at the next meeting, and then we can also have that waterline discussion, because I think that obviously makes things better and have that tree council walkthrough, so you kind of have all of that, and then you can do that whole environmental review and call for a public hearing at the next meeting.
I, I think Laura, you make one good point there is uh, regarding the common plan development, you know, the uh, correspondence that the town has received, and Mr. Lisi, Lisi stated he had contact with that department and has, and received different information, I think it'd be great to have that clarified before a public hearing, um, be able to tell the public, you know, that it's straightened out, um, and um, that might uh, that, that to me seems, seems important, that, that aspect alone, I think everything else can be worked out, but that, that seems to be an important factor. Um, is there any thoughts from the rest of the board or um, any comments? Uh, I don't wanna put Mr. Briggs, I know Mr. Briggs is online also, but do you have any thoughts or, or any guidance for the board, Mr. Briggs?
No, it's a board decision, um, Mr. Lisi's correct, uh, the decision was clear that um, he's not to be singled out. So I just wanna reiterate that the court's decision was quite implis, quite clear on that.
Okay. And again, that's, as I stated, and I know that it's not the board's intention, just trying to do a good job here, of course. So I guess we got, uh, you know, we have some input from the town planner and uh, project lead that uh, that we wait um, and try to get some preliminary information to support the public hearing, that's what I hear. Anybody disagree with that?
I would be, I was going forward now.
Going forward now, okay.
The next meeting is a public hearing.
Alright. Kinda, kinda, kinda stands to, I guess I got one, one option here, I guess let's um, you know, put it to a, put it to a vote. Um, and we can do it, uh, we can poll, poll the board, um, uh, those in favor of uh, issuing a negative declaration and a resolution at our next meeting.
Hang on, Chairman Walsh, I'm sorry, before you call, before you call for, for a vote, I just wanna get one thing clear. Is it within the boards, right, in the subdivision at this point in time, to call for a seeker?
Yes, you have to, because you can call for a public hearing prior to the application being complete, and New York State has um, has put out guidance that the application isn't complete until you've done a seeker.
Okay, I just wanted to get that in the record and be clear, thank you.
Yep, and then that's what we typically do when we, we call, make a resolution, call for a resolution for the public hearing, that's typical. Right, and again, uh, and I, I know, yeah, as far as engineering, I know everybody hears this a lot, you know, we can, we can work through the issues, uh, obviously, the uh, communication, uh, I guess, DEC regarding common plan development, uh, we'll work through that also, whatever the uh, authority states, we will, we will follow what the authority states. Uh, if Mr. Lisi disagrees, he'll have to uh, uh, you know, will have to get it in writing, uh, that it's overwritten, okay? So I'm gonna again, call, call for a vote, so we'll know where we stand, uh, and the vote's gonna be uh, a negative, a resolution for a negative declaration and call for a public hearing on this sketch, on, on this subdivision for the next meeting. Those in favor uh, would be a positive vote, aye. So, uh, Mr. Hemmard, could you call the role on that? Mr. Khan?
Nay.
Mr. McPartlin?
Nay.
Mr. Darpino?
Nay.
Mr. Oster?
Nay.
Ms. Shenfield?
Nay.
Ms. Gold?
I, we leave the engineering to the engineers, so I think we're at a stage where we should move forward.
Chairman Walsh? I'm gonna vote aye, um, I think that if we have the public hearing, we'll get some additional information from the public, and we'll utilize that information obtained from the public to, to make sure the engineering is done properly, um, and that's why I vote aye. Um, so the, uh, the resolution uh, does not pass, we will not have a, uh, the motion does not carry, we will not have a resolution at the next meeting. Uh, Mr. Lisi, if you can try to get a jumpstart on some of the information regarding the state uh, common plan, you know, determination on the common plan of development, uh, anything on the water line, uh, we can discuss it at the next meeting, and if we're, if we're moving forward, and then we'll call for a sketch plan approval, or excuse me, uh, we'll call for a negative declaration and a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, and thank you for your, your time. Anything further regarding thirteen eighty? Okay, well, thank you, everybody, I know it's a tough one, and I appreciate um, everybody working hard on this one in your honesty. Alright, that's it for thirteen eighty.
But we're only talking just about one meeting, essentially?
What we're talking, what we said we would do is we're, we're postponing it, the next meeting, we'll have a discussion again. If we, if we like what we hear at the next meeting, we can call for negative deck and red, and um, a public hearing at the next meeting, which we put it another two weeks out from there.
Yeah.
Um, and the next meeting isn't until April twelfth, so that gives, that's about three weeks, I think, away, we got a little bit of a gap here. Is it three weeks, maybe not?
Yeah, it, it just seemed like it was, it was just not that like, people were necessarily against it at some point, it was just kind of sudden.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, look, there, there, there are some open questions here, and I know that we've, that this is no different from how we've done things in the past.
Yeah, it's not a postponement, guys, we haven't even got the minor subdivision application, so Clerk and I will reach out to him and give him the minor subdivision application. We'll address the items that you brought up, that you wanna know before the environmental um, determination is made, and then we'll know where we are to move forward at the next meeting, it's not a postponement or a different treatment, it's completely fine, and I think we're okay moving on to the next item.
Yep, I agree, yep, and thank you again, everybody. Uh, yep, next item is three four ten State Street site plan application for an addition requiring area variances to the existing building. And uh, Mr. Diarpino is uh, the project lead on this, and we have the applicant also online. Now I'll turn it over.
Okay, thanks, uh, so this past week, we had some correspondence with Mr. Seraphini regarding where he is in the process. He had a six-month milestone to come up with a concept plan, which he submitted and is part of your package. Uh, basically, it's, it's, it's pretty general, um, it does address the proposed footprint of the building, which obviously would be to extend to the rear section of the property. There was a calculation done on the amount of parking spaces that would be there. I believe the dual use still pertains to this property, which Mr. Seraphini would like to keep, so it would be the uh, guns and ammunition business along with the uh, car sales lot. And then there's also going to be a handful of zoning requests that he's gonna have to go to the zoning board for setbacks and possibly some parking spaces and some other things he's gonna have to work out at the, the next step of the process. That's a, that's a quick summary of where we are right now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Diarpino, um, you know, obviously, the uh, sketch was included in our packet. Um, uh, one thing, Mr. Seraphini, obviously, we're not the zoning board of appeals, that's not our authority, uh, but we do have to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, so, um, and I won't put you on the spot tonight, but some of the questions that are gonna come up would be, you know, how, how many square feet do you need? You know, you know, is it, uh, is a, is there a way to minimize uh, your request? So, which in turn would minimize the variances, um, and I don't know if you, you know, if you've figured that out, or uh, uh, you've gone that far, I mean, when I look at the sketch, it looks like pretty much you're trying to squeeze the maximum you can off the back of that building, and that may be fine, if that's what you need, but I'd like to hear from you about, um, you know, what your needs are.
Okay, um, well, speaking to the general uh, what we sent over so far, my engineer is actually a little bit further along than um, what it shows on the sketch plan. Uh, we worked out a lot in regards to obviously parking area, um, you know, we had to figure out some handicap access, uh, things along those lines, which he's been able to do pretty well based on everything that uh, is out there. So just starting with that, um, as far as the actual space that we need, we need it all. Um, that's the, the really short and long of it, we need as much as we can get, and sadly, with the the layout of that lot being sandwiched between Schenectady and, or excuse me, between Albany Streets and uh, State Street, regardless of what we do, we're going to be applying for, you know, a lot of variances. So, you know, if we shortened the building, um, in so far as that it's going towards Albany Street by five feet, yes, that would, you know, reduce by five feet the variance that we request. Um, is that a substantial reduction to make it worth doing it that way instead of, you know, giving us that maximum space that we can inside? As far as myself and, you know, my engineer thought, it wasn't really gonna make a big difference. Um, the one thing that I have done is, you know, I, I've conversed with my neighbors as much as I could, you know, during winter months when you don't see them as often, and, you know, the positive for me is that they're all content with, you know, what I'd like to do, so, you know, hopefully, that will help to minimize, you know, anybody's concerns that's in the area, if the neighbors themselves are comfortable with the concept.
Hmm, is that a, a single-story proposal that you have, Mr. Seraphini?
Um, what it would be is, it would still be the two-story, so just the way the building is now, how it's got the uh, the peak, we would uh, you know, do the same thing where we'd have the, the first floor, which is all the uh, the retail space, and then the second floor, which would be just for storage for us, it would not be, you know, retailer open to the public, just storage space for us. So, you know, it would kind of follow the look of uh, another residential uh, property in the area, because that's, that's what our existing building kind of looks like.
Will, will the buildings be connected on the inside?
Oh God, yes, it, it will be one solid building.
So, so it's, it's correct to consider this then an extension of the building that already exists?
Absolutely, that is exactly how we intend to do it.
I, I think that matters for the zoning board of appeals, doesn't it, Laura, as an extension versus a new building?
I mean, it does, to the extent that the existing building is pre-existing non-conforming, and there's a lot in itself is non-conforming, adding addition on it to, you know, make sure that the use, you know, well, not make sure, but because the zoning is a hardship on the use to continue, that's something to look at.
Okay, are you gonna, Mr. Seraphini, you plan on having some sketches for, or what visually the uh, addition may look like also? Concepts or anything like that?
Yeah, I was actually hoping to have them tonight, but my engineer's been away for the weekend, I think, you know, he must have taken some time off, so I wasn't able to get ahold of him for that, I'd like to have him for the next meeting.
Okay, just, I suggest, obviously suggest you get anything you can to us, so we can help you move this along to meet the, the time requirements uh, that have been imposed, you know, by this board and by the zoning board of appeals. Um, you know, glad to see that, uh, you know, you're working on addition and plan on sticking around, of course. Um, we need, you know, we need the details so that we can make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, Mr. Khan, you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do recall that this property already has several variances associated with it, right? Is there any extra complexity that causes both our recommendation process and to the ZBA? I, I mean, I think we probably wanna see what those variances are before we make a recommendation too, right?
Yeah, we can, Clerk can, Clerk can attention right now, because he does most of the work on these planning board packets. Um, but we can pull the old variances and summarize them for you at the next um, meeting.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I guess let me, I'm just asking it of the board, right, is that something that? I, I just want Mr. Seraphini to run into, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great, Mr. Khan, to have an updated summary of all the variances associated with the property for our consideration, yes. And, you know, visually, uh, what, you know, sooner or later, what the property will look like, and um, you know, obviously, all the um, variances that, that would result, all the required variances that result as a function of the design, loss of parking spaces, front yard, setback on Albany Street, et cetera, et cetera, so. But we, you know, we gotta, we gotta get some more details, um, to keep this moving forward.
Okay, I, I think Mr. Khan was kind of going down a path that I've concerned myself with along the way as well, which is, you know, if anybody feels we're dead in the water, I think that should be brought out ahead of time instead of having me spend time and money doing, you know, further engineering on it if, you know, if that's kind of dead in the water, a, a, at least that's what I think Mr. Khan was, you know, asking about.
I, I mean, that's one consequence of it, Craig, but I think I was coming strictly from having the board have full awareness of exactly what's going on on that property before we're able to make a decision on what it is that uh, that we'd recommend to the ZBA. So actually, see, seeing, I mean, we need to see your drawings, as Mr., as Chairman Walsh, you know, in, uh, stated.
Absolutely, um, one of the other things that I am going to suggest is, while I know you'd like to give a, a, a positive or a negative to the ZBA, considering that there are some timeframes involved here, and that the ZBA is going to be a huge piece of what we can and can't do with this, I do think we should have it, you know, moving forward to them, at least to review it and give us their input, because anything else is going to just keep kicking this down the, the line, and I don't believe that we're gonna be able to make those deadlines if we're not moving forward on both fronts.
Well, it comes through the planning board, as you know, the recommendation to get you to the ZB, ZBA, for us to get you there, we need the information, we don't have a, a summary of all the uh, area variances that are required in the details yet, so you get us the details, and we'll, you know, we'll move it forward as quickly as possible. Uh, and uh, you know, along with the additional information, just so we understand, better understand the other property itself, uh, and we'll get there.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Chairman Walsh and, and, and Mr. Khan. Those plans and those elevations, specifically the parking lot side and the state and Albany Street sides, I think will be helpful for us, because once we compile that list of zoning issues, we can discuss, discuss the pros and cons of the extension to the building, how it's addressing it, sacrificing parking spaces or reorienting parking spaces, so that, you know, of this, I'll say, small litany of things that you're gonna have to go to the ZBA on, we can clearly address each one from a planning perspective. I think that'll help you, it's gonna help you in the, in the long run to go to that first meeting. If you go in with a sketch plan like this, it's a good jumping off point, but I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be too vague, and it's not gonna help.
Okay.
So, we'll work with you over the next month, and I, I agree with you too, we'd like to get this moving, so you can meet your milestones. Um, you've shown a commitment to it, which is good, so we've gotten to the first one. You know, the next real big hurdle is to get the plans to us. If you wanna have an interim meeting in between, let us know, we also eventually would recommend this to the Architecture Review Board, which has been a great uh, committee, uh, that some other developers and some other applicants have been working with. Um, they can give you some great insight too, and then getting you to the ZBA with, with a really good understanding of, you know, when you have those variances that you're going, some of them are going to be weighted heavier and more scrutinized than some of the other smaller ones, and if we can go through that priority list, I think it's just gonna help you.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm good with that, and like I said, I, hopefully, we'll have something together very quickly, you know, obviously, it would be by the next meeting, but, you know, um, with my engineer, he should be pretty close to having a solid, you know, sketch and everything else, so we can start showing you what our, our visual for it is.
Yeah, I agree with your Dr. Pino, those are great comments, and uh, as always, as stated, this with other applicants, uh, Mr. Seraphini, your critical path, you know, we'll help you, but you gotta, you know, get us the information so we can, and we'll move it along. Uh, I had one comment for the planning office, the packet that was uh, contained online, uh, the application was not signed or dated. Uh, do you have a signed and dated one on file in the planning office?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
And Kevin, I just wanted to mention, we don't need to do the recommendation at the next meeting, but we would need the dimensions um, by the next meeting-ish, because you need to have like your full application in by the fifteenth of the month prior to going on the zoning board. So we would need to kind of have a general, well, we would need to know the dimensions by April fifteenth, so that he would, so that Mr. Seraphini would be able to go on the May meeting. So, that's like, if that's a target, to have those dimensions by April fifteenth, and then there's time in between having those dimensions and getting the denial for the planning board. And then there's time in between having those dimensions and getting the denial for the planning board to look at it and make its recommendation. But there is, this one definitely needs a county referral, so we do, do need to have the dimensions in by like April fifteenth.
Okay, so I guess we'll just, I mean, uh, I'll defer to Mr. DRP. I guess we'll play it by ear, see what we get and where we stand. If we get enough information that we're comfortable, we can go forward. If not, you know, wouldn't make the main meeting would be the June zoning board of appeals. You know, so again, we'll do what we can to help. Once we get some information to look at, you know, uh, obviously the area variances that are required.
Okay, um, if I could request it of you, uh, whether it be Mr. DRPino or, or, uh, Clark, um, if somebody could just send me a, a list of what specifically you need the most, I will focus my guy working on the things you need the most and we'll just, we'll treat it like a checklist. We'll work our way down, but we'll focus on the, the most important pieces of that first.
Yeah, I believe that's the, all the area variances, right? So the setbacks and the parking and so on and so forth.
Okay, so get your numbers for area variances, then, um, the sketch plans and then go from there.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Seraphini or comments from the, the board? No? Okay, Mr. Seraphini, pause in your court and we'll, we'll look forward to, to your next medal and, uh, any, any help you need, obviously reach out to the planning office and I'll help guide you, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Hey, that's it for, uh, discussion items tonight and, uh, we'll move on to, um, reports. Uh, turn it over to Laura. Laura, first up you have is COVID nineteen update?
Yeah, I, um, I just leave that on there in case you guys have any questions. Town hall is open. Um, we're at a hundred percent staff, so people are allowed in and out of the building. Um, most of our staff has been fully vaccinated. I know that we were working really hard to get our boards fully vaccinated and then then that we were able to have in-person meetings again. But I still have no word on in-person meetings. So, um, as soon as I do that, I will reach out to you guys. Um, but really my update's really just on the workings of town hall for now, unless you had any specific questions.
Has the town board scheduled a, uh, in-person meeting yet?
My knowledge, not yet.
Okay, we know that they're gonna, they're gonna kick it off and guide us, uh, based on their lessons learned. So we'll look forward, uh, to them getting back in public.
Hey, hey Laura, can I, maybe this is the last part of the meeting, but about the vaccination part, I mean, are planning board members being vaccinated? I mean, I guess now, you know, if you're over fifty, anyone's eligible, but I didn't know whether there was anything in specific that, that the town, that the town was doing for the board members in terms of, you know, specific locations or?
And we were trying to get our boards vaccinated because they do, um, forward face with the public. They do onsite meetings. They actually did onsite meetings throughout the, in, the entire time of COVID and, um, do occasionally interact with the applicants on behalf of the town. Um, so we were trying to vaccinate the boards, um, you know, in conjunction with vaccinating the majority of staff so that that public interaction can continue safely.
Right, but I'm concerned that there was an email that got sent out in early January and then there was never any follow-up on that.
Uh, anybody who said they were interested in vaccinating should have gotten a call. So if there was something missed, then re-mail me and I will follow up.
Yeah, actually, if I recall the email, it actually said, do not contact us. And we'll contact us if you don't want to be vaccinated, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and if you, and if you never received a follow-up or a call, just send me an email and I will follow up with you.
Okay. I have an appointment for middle, the middle of May, but, um, you know, I don't know if the town is doing anything in specific. Like I said, I, I've been under the impression that it was a, the email said, do not email us if you don't want to be vaccinated, not.
Right, yeah. So if we, if, if something was missed, then go ahead and email me.
Okay, all right.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Oster. All right, uh, that's it for COVID nineteen update. Unless there's any questions for Laura?
Laura, I read on the website that, um, it's appointment only for visitors. Is that still the case?
It is appointment only, but it's a bit flexible. Um, like for instance, if you're going to come into the planning or billing department to check on something, typically you can be standing outside the door and then they call up. And if there isn't anybody up there, then you can make an appointment for yourself standing in front of the door. It's not like we're requiring twenty-four hour notice for appointments or anything. The only reason it really says that is that we're trying to limit so that the offices that we do business in, in the town of Niskuna, even though the building itself is large, when the people actually come in, they're typically small. So we're trying to make sure that there's only one person in the department at each time, which is why it says appointment only. We also have to keep track of everybody who comes in the building for, because we're, because, because of tracing.
And the town clerk is still doing most of that business by mail or the Dropbox.
That's correct. Yep, the majority of people who come into town hall right now are mostly coming to the building department.
Okay. All right, next up was, uh, Knott Street proposal for public comment, April twelfth. Laura?
Yeah, so to Mr. Khan's point, um, we did actually receive kind of the final drawing. Uh, well, not the final drawing, a good drawing, but haven't been able to roll it out in time, did not want to rush it. I'm feeling optimistic because we have two weeks between our planning board meetings, which we normally have one week. Um, so I am hopeful to wrap that all up, get the public comment out. Um, so that we can have input at our next meeting, April twelfth.
Right, so I mean, but that really cuts it close to three days in which the planning board could actually see that stuff at our next meeting. And when the hearing is going to be, or actually, it's the same day, isn't it?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Wait, three days to what?
I'm sorry, not three days. So we're, so just, I'm looking at the dates. We're going to be getting drawings on the same day that the public comment period is going to be, correct?
No, no, you guys would get the drawings. Well, we want to release the drawings to the public with lots of time before the meeting so that they digest it and they can ask us questions and then they formulate their co, their comments, right? So we would want to put out a, like a public release of the information like, you know, this week if possible.
Okay, I mean, that's the, that's the thing I'm asking, right? So i- is that going to be possible? Because April twelve is two weeks from now, right?
It's three weeks.
Three weeks from now, I'm sorry, three weeks from now.
Yeah. It, I mean, you asked me that last time and clearly I thought it was and then it wasn't.
Okay, all right.
I will try.
All right, so the goal is to, um, is to get that out to the public, uh, via the webpage and some announcement. And will we actually be having a public hearing or just privilege of the floor or under discussion? What, what's the plan for, uh, how we're gonna?
I was getting, because it's not a formal public hearing because they're not calling for it with a resolution, but it is essentially a public hearing. If not under privilege of the floor, you can almost just break it out as the Knott Street, you know, public comment period as an agenda item, so that it's separate and distinct, but it doesn't actually, because there isn't anybody to like, well, as far as I know, we're not planning on actually mailing out, uh, radius.
So I guess my comment is, if you, when that's issued, whatever format it's issued, you may want to make notation to the public that they have several opportun, options for providing us feedback, whether that be email, privilege of the floor at the next meeting, or possibly, you know, town board privilege of the floor, um, whatever, you know, whatever way you deem, uh, is best Laura. But we should probably make that part of the announcement so they know how they can provide feedback.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Mm-hmm.
All right. And if I recall, uh, we had project leads, I think it was Mr. DRPino and he had a partner.
It was me.
I wasn't sure.
Mr. Khan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys. I appreciate that. Yep, we had some preliminary information, but we'll give it out to the public and, uh, and we'll, we'll have some soak time also and be prepared to discuss it. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, Knott Street proposal? Okay. All right, and last is, uh, under reports, Laura, is historic preservation town code, which was some examples and state recommendations were included in our packet.
Yeah, so I wanted to appreciate and thank Dennis Brennan for attending. He sat through that whole meeting, so he talked to you guys about the historic code. Thanks, Dennis. But essentially like we've been having a couple of discussions, like Dennis and I went and we talked to the Clifton Park historian, um, on how they enacted their historic code. And I think one of the things that, you know, we're taking strongly from thirteen eighty van Antwerp is lesson learned and doing things better. And one of the major holes that we have, I think, in our review and regulation is the lack of a formal historic preservation code. So, Dennis, I went, we went through and looked around at certain codes and Dennis, um, I'll let you speak just in a second. So we just had three attached in their packet and I'm sorry that they were so long. The New York State one is the one that's really the longest. The Clifton Park and the Malta one are really not too long, but there are two different kind of approaches to historic preservation. Clifton Park's kind of the carrot where they want you to do a lot of things voluntarily and they're also able to offer tax incentives to people who did restrict their historic property. Um, Malta is kind of like, we're calling you historical and then you've got these certain things that you need to go through. So it's sort of like a stick. Although it's not a terrible stick. And then the New York State code, the reason I put it in there is because I think that Clifton Park and Malta of that model code, which is something that Niskuna could do as well. Like maybe we went to do more of a carrot approach, um, but couldn't do the tax incentive. We could go through that New York State model code and just pick out the parts that are the most relevant to us and then build our own. Um, but we were thinking, obviously you guys are the best at code. I know it's super fun and we love doing it. So what we were thinking is we could take a look at those three codes, um, get your thoughts on which one works or if we want to kind of make up a model one from the New York one. And then we could start, um, putting that on as like an agenda item for recommendations to the town board of adoption. Do you want to add anything, Dennis?
No, you pretty well covered it Laura. I, um, I do think one of the lessons learned, as you say, from thirteen eighty, which was, I thought, a rather convoluted and, um, tortured decision by the judge, but I think one of the lessons learned is that we have to have a formal code, some sort of formal identified code of preservation, uh, within our system, um, that can be recognized. And, and it's, it's not meant to, I'll, I'll go back to what, uh, you know, what's her name, Rebecca said. It, it's not meant to say it's a historic if we were to put a plaque on the building, but it's recognize the importance of historic preservation within the town, regardless of whether there's a plaque on the building or not. Uh, and something we can follow and something we can use in the future when another thirteen eighty comes up. We're not going to stop people from, uh, from, you know, putting, changing their home. Uh, but it may come in handy if people, um, decide to do, uh, subdivisions like this one or uh, give us a, a bit of a, a step up if people want to make certain changes that simply don't fit with the, uh, um, with the atmosphere of the, the locale in which they're in. Um, but I think it, it sets us up as, uh, having adopted and respecting a no, a notion of the importance of historic preservation in keeping with the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan and understanding that developing just for developing sake is not something we want to be involved in.
Well, and there were two.
Your help to, to sort of identify the way this code should be structured.
Yeah, and there's three things in, I think, all codes that are pretty important. One is like formally formalizing the historic committee. Right now they operate under a resolution, so the code gives them power to review certain historical projects. One is, the other one that I really liked that Dennis and I have talked about is most of these codes have something where if the, in Clifton Parks, I think, is if the home is more than fifty years, the historical committee looks at a demolition permit. That, that may be because New York State considers anything historical over fifty years. Um, but, and I don't know if fifty years is the right, uh, cutoff for Niskuna or not, but I do think that it's useful um, for a historic committee to be reviewing building permit demolitions on historic homes. Because we've run into a couple of times where the homes just get taken down for the planning board even looks at, i.e. Kilt Farm. Like there was nothing we could do there. They just came in and got a building permit and took the house down. You can't say no. But if you have a historical committee, they can at least look and confirm with the developer, yeah, this house is not structurally sound, it can't be saved. Is there anything in here that's worth, you know, documenting or documenting it for the public record, for the historic record? They go in there and they check all of that, work with them, talk to them about how important historic homes are and hopefully you have a better outcome for any demolitions that go through. So I really like that. Um, and then, yeah, just having a formal process for people to um, designate their homes as historical is obviously very helpful to us.
Um, and I know David, uh, you've done a lot of work on this, but how do, how do we, uh, identify the homes? Is it self-identified by the owners or uh, is there a little bit of, uh, research or what we know out there, combination of things? You know, how do we get to the point where we feel we've got a good enough handle on what's out there to, uh, help prevent problems in the future or at least identify our potential problems?
Well, I think it, it could be either the, the historical commission that is, is set up can do that themselves or the owners can um, contact the, the commission and, and request them to take a look at the home and see whether it deserves a historical designation. It can go either way. Uh, we do already have this nineteen eighty-five inventory of historic homes identified. I think about seventy or eighty, uh, historic buildings in town. Only one of those have been taken down at, at this point in time. Uh, so we do have a sort of a foundation to begin to build on. Um, but there were a lot of homes built in the nineteenth century, um, that weren't in that inventory. There are other homes in town, uh, which people may be interested in being recognized as, as, uh, being historical and and worthy of, of acknowledgement. And I think it could go either way. Either the homeowner can come to us or we can go to the homeowner.
Yeah, and the significance could also be that, you know, a person lived in a home that might have some historical character to it, but the person itself contributed more. Like I know my neighbor's house, the inventor that invented refrigeration for GE built that house. Um, he also built another house down the street for his daughter. So there's a, there's a connection there to a local company. You know, the houses are, they're nice. Um, one is, I think, in the nineteen twenties, the other one is, is in the teens. So again, you know, from a architectural standpoint, they're nice. Um, but again, I, I think that the person that there probably contributed more to the history. And I'm thinking that, you know, maybe later this spring, a committee could get together and just like, uh, you know, Mr. Brennan said, we've got that great foundation. We could take the inventory, we can update it. Um, you know, Mr. Scruby, Dennis and I talked about getting together this spring, getting outside and, you know, start to document the Schaefer homes, get some letters out to those owners. I think, um, even though some of those homes span into the nineteen sixties, I would still cate, categorize all of those as historical. And, you know, go around and, and check out some of the sites and see what we could, you know, what we could determine would be great additions to that compendium and, and get it updated.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Dave.
The notion of an individual, uh, recognizing an individual who lived in a home is, is certainly something that's in the, I know it's in the, uh, Clifton Park code, but that is a, a good reason for designation of something as historical.
Great. Hey, uh, this question's for Laura. Uh, Laura, there used to be a document on the town website that, um, I believe a resident took the, uh, tax database and worked the data so that it, uh, showed, uh, the oldest house on each street. And I didn't see that. I tried to find that. Um, it looks like it might have been taken down. Um, seems like that could have some value if someone did the work that had the, uh, age of all the homes already sorted from the tax database to help identify, you know, which, you know, maybe some that we missed or something like that. Dennis, do you have that document or have you seen that?
I have that document. I thought it was still up at the town. If it's not, I can certainly send it to you, Kevin. Some of those dates are questionable, but it's a good basis to start with.
My, my, you know, I think you're working on uploading documents on your historic, um, this, this Niskuna history webpage, whatever you want to call it. That might be something that you might just want to put online if it's, uh, if of, of value and it's, uh, you know, uh, good quality, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an excellent pro, project. And it just took the dates that are in the assessors' reports. Uh, but I do know some of those dates are, are questionable, but still it's a, it's a great basis for beginning a study in.
Great.
I'll try and see if it's on the site because I saw it was still on the town.
Yeah, it used to be on the main page and I think it's been replaced with something else. Any questions or comments regarding, uh, historic preservation?
Yes. I'm okay with the carrot approach. All the people who want to have their homes designated if they fit, fine. I have a real problem with other people deciding that for the homeowners, especially when it comes down to diminishing their property rights. I, I don't think it's legally correct. I don't think it's morally correct and I would oppose that. I will also note that even though anything over fifty years old may be designated historic, when it comes down to when it comes down to carrot and most properties is whether they can tap into other funding for needed updates, improvements, or simple maintenance even. Uh, it's a very competitive environment. An age-old doesn't do it. If we could reflect that somehow, so people don't have unwarranted expectations of getting financial aid to maintain their older home, that would be good.
Okay, thank, yeah, thank you. Those are the kinds of details, obviously, you gotta work out what the restrictions are and what, uh, what it means for the property owner from a financial standpoint also. Uh, obviously, you want to maintain the historic properties the best we can, but define line dealing with people's rights also. But that's something I guess we'd work out in the code that's developed, right?
Yeah, so if you guys, I know it seems like a lot of pages, but I would say really just focus on reading Clifton Park and Malta. And then you can just kind of scroll through New York State to see all the different kind of sections it has. And then just give me like any thoughts that you have. Um, that would point Dennis and I in the right direction for drafting a template, um, not, you know, at the next meeting or so. Oh, and I did just want to put on the record, I mean, it's not intentional that this, um, code change is being proposed at the same time we're reviewing thirteen eighty, because it's obviously not retroactive. So in no way does it affect anything that we're doing with that subdivision review. Um, it just so happened that Dennis came, and, you know, we started working on this at the same time, but it's not, it's it's not retroactive, obviously, in any way, so it doesn't impact any subdivision reviewing right now.
Yeah, only on a go-forward basis, once we have something in place. Okay, well, thank you, Laura, and thank you, Dr. Brennan. Appreciate it. Anything else on that subject?
Well, I just wanted to ask a question. You know, while we're debating the merits of the carrot versus stick-based approaches, can't really have a carrot-based approach if there are no incentives offered by the town. I know it was already mentioned, but there really is very little appetite for offering incentives. So I I would like to know, um, what, what, how, what will the town boards, what kind of support do we have from the town board for pursuing this, these code amendments?
Well, so it is interesting, I guess, in some respects. When I say stick, I don't think that there's really an appetite from anyone to go around enforcing like a historic district or restrictions to property um, to people with this code. That's, even Malta's code isn't like that. The the difference between Malta's and Clifton Park's code is that Malta has the town board designate the areas. Um, and, you know, then they have some mild restrictions. They have a certain waiting period for reviewing the historic, um, nature of the property and stuff like that. But but nothing like extremely detrimental in any way. Um, and Dennis and I were even talking, like, the town board isn't, they're, I mean, it's political and it's elected, it's not gonna go around tromping people's property rights, like, that's just not. So even though I call it, it's really just, if rather than, I think probably the people are still coming, it's just rather than there being a program where people, people make an application and say, this is what I'm going to do with my historic property, the town board receives a certain number of, you know, information, and then they go ahead and say, okay, we have these historic homes. Um, but I think in all cases, they're working with the property owners, and everything is above board, and nobody's, you know. I don't think the intention is to make anybody extremely unhappy with any of this code. But as far as like incentivizing, like, the Clifton Park code is very specific in that you can just bring forward your home. And like Dennis and I know of these programs where you can get historic plaques. The town board's been willing to fund, um, you know, historic designation plaques. They were willing to fund the Schaefer, um, plaques. So I think that, you know, there's a definitely, you know, moving forward, they're not that expensive, an appetite to, um, work through designating homes that want to be designated. And obviously, we still, we still have to bring all of this to Economic Development Committee meeting at the next meeting and make sure that everybody's on board. But, you know, Clifton Park has a very specific thing, which I mentioned earlier, which is you can just get your home recognized, or you can take it to the next step where it's deed-restricted. Um, and if you deed-restrict it in purpose, you know, to to, actually, it's not even in, I think it's in certain year chunks. Then you are able to receive a tax discount because you are putting a restriction on your property to the benefit of the public. Um, I don't know what the town board's appetite is for that. I don't know. It's not something that we've discussed with them yet. Um, but there's varying levels, and I would think that even formalizing um, a way to designate historic homes is going to help with any review. Maybe even recognizing, you know, in our code and looking in New York State code to see if it's in there, recognizing a registrar that we have, or recognizing a study that we have showing, you know, the nature of these buildings. And then, um, also, I really think it's a big deal to put something in code about the demolition of the historic buildings, because we have nothing. Um, those three things, even if it's not, you know, perfect, is a good way to start, I think, in my opinion.
Okay. At Clifton Park is very clear in its code that the designation as a historic building carries no obligations, no restrictions of any sort. It's only if you decide to go to the next level and seek an assessment, and that's completely up to the homeowner. Do that, uh, not assessment, an easement. Uh, it's completely up to the homeowner.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Anything else? All right, work in progress, and we'll talk some more about it, and we'll talk about the economic development, uh, next economic development meeting. Okay, that's it for reports. Laura, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's all for me. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to commission business. And, uh, Mr. Oster, you have anything for us tonight?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. DRPino?
I'd be more than happy to work on the historic preservation code amendments. And if I could get an invite to the next Economic Development Committee meeting, I'll try to work that into my schedule.
Okay, thanks, David.
And that's it.
And that's the next, uh, next one is the next first Friday in April, I believe. And it'll be posted, and Laura will get your invitation out.
Maybe? Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay. All right, Mr. McCartland?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Khan?
Nothing, thank you, sir.
Ms. Gold?
Nothing tonight.
And Ms. Schoenfield?
Nothing for me.
Okay, and I have nothing further, um, except for thank you and a happy spring for everybody. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by, uh, Mr. Khan and seconded by Mr. Oster. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing no one oppose, we'll adjourn the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Funding Board and Zoning Commission at eight thirty-eight P M. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.